I have one o'clock, I'll call the Board of Supervisors. Meeting to order. Our first budget meeting, our first budget work session for the budget cycle. We'll start out with the presentation from the city assessor, Mr. Troy Patzner and county assessor Billy Selby. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Happy to be working inside.
Yes, exactly. No doubt about that. This is definitely what you think of as January in Iowa. So can you hear me just fine Stella and Anne? Are we good?
Yeah, we can hear great.
Great. So Stella, from your controls there, are you able to start up the PowerPoint? Nice. There's a reason I brought my glasses.
Is that on the screen? Okay for everyone?
It's good with me if everybody else is fine.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, yeah, thanks for the introductions there. So Billy and I put this together this year. For you, pretty much similar format. Couple of things you've mentioned in the past, we've added two, so we will. Start on with it. So when we first start off with the next page there is just kind of going over in general again with the tax cycle timing. How the. So the budget that we're working on, preparing everyone's budgets for right now is dealing with the 2021 assessment. So that is, that assessment was established for January 1st, 2021, which technically means everything had happened during that 2020 calendar year. So and then in the end of, like I said there, September 24th, the equalization orders are, were assessed. This was a. So every odd year, just to kind of bring back on our two-year tax cycle timing that we have. On the odd number of years, our equalization year, which is kind of the check and balance that the Department of Revenue does with the assessors. Jurisdiction and they look at the classes of property, commercial, multi-res, residential, and then also agricultural. And they do what's called, have an equalization, it's the equalization year. So for commercial, multi-res and residential, they look at our sales for the year, all the normal arms-length sales that transpired in that jurisdiction. And they compare that to our assessments that we had on each parcel to determine that assessment level. They take our assessed value, divide that by the sale price, and that gives that ratio for that particular sale. And then they rank all of those sales, all those ratios then from low to high. And they take that median sale. So we live and die kind of on that median sales ratio. So the department gives us a window of our median sales ratio for each class of property. We need to be between 95 and 105. If we fall outside of that parameter, then we either, we've got two options. We either make adjustments ourselves or the department will put an equalization order on in the fall, like it mentioned right here in September. So that's when the state puts out the equalization orders. So you know, typically, we try to make all of our adjustments. Our, you know, thing is to try to make our adjustments internally based off of those sales. If you don't have the sales to do that, the state does come in and do appraisals with their appraisals will come in and they'll take a, a number of properties and look at their. And do an appraisal on it compared to our assessment level and then mix that in with the mix of the sales that were for that class of property. So with that being said, that that's the commercial, multi-res and residential is based off of that sales agriculture is a little different. It's based on this productivity formula that the, it's based on a five-year average of basically all of the. Inputs between the input costs and what the, each of those commodities traded for, and then what that average yield was for that jurisdiction also. And so that was a little bit different. And usually we get those numbers plenty in time and we can make adjustments for that. This was a little different year this last year. That's why we had the equalization order. I don't know if it's for the first time or not, but for a long time on agricultural. So the orders were issued for multi-residential outside of Dubuque had a plus nine percent. Billy can, you know, expand into that if research chooses.
Yeah, so multi-residential, we knew we had to make some changes. When Dave was finalizing values, he decided to let things roll and what came up with was I negotiated with the Department of Revenue. To come up with what we thought was the appropriate percentage to bring values up to 100%. Market value essentially is, is what multi-res is, what we're looking at. So in those negotiations. We basically made a determination that we needed to raise values nine percent for multi-res. Which was. Calculated out by removing nursing homes, nursing homes, care facilities. We had some sales that showed that those did not. Need that type of increase. So we pulled those off there, which left about a 12% raise for apartments, mobile home parks in those states. So with nine percent raise for that agricultural, like Troy was saying. That was partially due to the state of Iowa, Department of Revenue not having numbers in time from the USDA and Iowa State Extension. Meaning the calculations came in later than people were really able to make adjustments on. So that's where we got those, those orders from.
So then in October, the rollback is established. I guess first of all, is there any questions kind of on the, on that while we're, okay?
The question I've had is I never have seen the formula for ag. And so if you happen to have that laying around and would forward it to the supervisors, I would find that interesting. I've never seen the actual formula for inputs, outputs and how they calculate that.
We can forward that to you. I will, if you've. You know, if there's some, if you ever have issues, you're trying to fall asleep or anything like that at night, it'd be a great read to do right before that. I took the class once when I first started, I can't probably 16, by 15, 16 years ago, and it was a week-long class. Kind of go through the whole thing, but yeah, it's, there's a lot.
Like you, I've found when you're talking to citizens about taxes, it's better to be well-educated.
Yeah. So yeah.
All I'll say is that an assessor would rather go deal with an angry farmer than deal with the act formula itself. So.
Okay.
It's, it's, it is convoluted, but it serves its purpose.
Yeah, and it, yeah, no, absolutely. Forward that on to, to the board. You bet.
For sure. Thank you.
And try to answer any questions on, on the formula back from it as you have them. But we may need to dig in a little bit when there's a few questions on some of that stuff and how they tabulate that. So then in, Anne was, did you have any questions? I guess is, I didn't catch, I didn't look up. I'm trying to look both places when you're seeing any response. So, okay. In October, the rollback then is established for each classification. So the rollback then is applied to the assessed value and that's how we end up with the taxable values, which then that's when they're known. So for ownership, that's for prorating taxes when there's a, say a change in, in, in ownership. So when something is sold. The ownership accrual period is July 1st through June 30th of 2022. That's based on this, with this 2021 assessment cycle that we're in. So right now, the timeframe that we're just starting off with here is the January, February, March for budget hearings to determine the revenue needs. Those revenue needs will then determine the levy rate. Treasurer's office will get out those taxes in, you know, later part of July and August. And that. To finish up with what we're starting on right now, those taxes are going to be what's due next September and on September 2022 and March of 23. So there's kind of just the whole. Cycle again of how the taxes work. So then just on the same slide that's been here before, primary reasons, you know, why taxes can increase, you know, on a property. So obviously if there's increase in overall governmental spending, you know, so even if one unit of that whole taxing. Of that levy is lower and one is a lot higher, it's obviously could still make the taxes change. There's an individual value change with, with a parcel or could also mean an increase. And then another reason is the tax burden shift. So in one class of property increases in their assessment or the taxable value, even if the assessed value didn't increase, but the rollback changed differently. That's where you could also have a tax burden shift from one class to another. And it will happen this year just due to revaluation, certain classes of property evaluations going higher than others, rollbacks changing with, with that. Yep.
I wasn't going to mention it, but it keeps hitting me. Your first point, actually the three primary reasons. It's really the, the tax levy.
Right.
That indicates that. It's not the spending. So we, we could, we could spend zero this year and we would still collect those taxes, correct?
Well, if, if you would levy, so if you, if your budget was zero though, then your levy. County's levy of what that would be.
They don't have to line.
Wouldn't have, wouldn't have a levy.
They haven't lined in my seven years. So that's where you get fund balances, another one. So my, my, maybe my suggestion is to revisit your, your first. In your first bullet point, is that really true? Certainly it has a direct effect if you look over the life of it, but.
Right.
What I tell taxpayers is that the only thing we can control that directly affects your taxes is that tax level. I can't control the valuation, I can't control the rollback, nor can I control the other taxing entities. The only mechanism I have here is setting that levy. And regardless of how much we spend, that levy will be assessed.
And I guess it's, you know, that just increase in overall government spending, just meaning, I guess you have a general term if. Overall, if you take all of the collective, say, you know, city, county, schools, all of that together. And if the overall spending increased amongst all of them overall, then your taxes were probably going to be higher. I guess that's just kind of the generalization that that statement really meant and not an individual, but I can see what you mean. Yeah.
If I would redo this slide, I would ask you to put property taxes on the top. You have taxes increase on property. So you know, as an example, we just received, well, basically the whole county, all the taxing entities in the county received over $50 million from the federal government. Not a single dollar of that came from property taxes.
Right.
True. So that's an example of what I'm kind of implying that it's not necessarily, necessarily just an increase in spending. It's really that tax levy that drives it.
Right.
On the formula. So now.
That's true.
Don't get me wrong, long-term, obviously, if you, if you wouldn't spend anything, then ultimately you wouldn't collect anything, but. So I thought I'd point that out.
Clarification.
My two cents.
Yep, you bet. Okay, so then the revaluation notes on residential and the ag dwellings. So for 2021, it was reassessment year, like we mentioned, there was significant assessed value changes. Between the city and Dubuque and the rest of Dubuque County. So outside Dubuque, the average increase in assessment was 7.3% and inside Dubuque, it was 8.9. What our average increase was. Like I said here, these are just averages, individual changes. Some individual, individual changes could have been much higher. We're basing that revaluation, we break things down by. Like in the city, for example, the individual map areas we have designated, analyze the sales in there. Billy with the county, you know, analyze rural sales, each city's different sale. So that's where adjustments can be different, you know, between each jurisdiction. You know, in the, between city, rural, that kind of stuff, different subdivisions even. So the rollback still play, will play a role in the tax calculation. So this year, residential parcels will receive. The rollback factor will be 54.13%. And last year, the rollback was 56.41. So then we can look at how that will affect our. Effect taxable values. So the residential parcel, just for an example here, and on this would be, it's just showing last year, if we had a $100,000 assessed value on a property. That rollback factor was the point 564094, which would give a taxable valuation of $56,409. So this year with that roughly that, on the average, that 8.1% increase, that $100,000 property would be 100,000, 108,100. The new rollback factor applied to that, that point 541302 would give you a taxable valuation of 58,515. So that percentage difference changed down there across the board, showing you that rollback factor going down less. But the overall taxable value still went up because of the increase in the assessment. That rollback factor, that's tied into the overall statewide residential doesn't increase more than 3%. There's an allowable growth factor in there. So accumulatively, the state only allows a 3% growth on a residential and on agricultural. So they apply that, how that rollback factor comes into play. So. So it's, you know, kind of looking at it ballpark-ish, probably statewide or is around 7% increase, you know, somewhere in there. And the overall increase in growth for that year only allowing, you know, 3% allowable growth is by the rollback factor change from the 56 down to the 54. So the revaluation, revaluation notes on the ag parcels. So this is based on those productivity values would have been from 2015 to 2019 years. Said they take that five-year average. So 2013 and 14 would have been dropped off the list and then 2018 and 19 years was what was added. So that's how that changes every two years is two years taken off and then two years added on. They don't, you know, so for the 21, 1121 values, they don't have the 2000, what happened actually in 2020, it takes. Well, this year it took until like April before they actually had all the 2019 information in. So it was kind of hard. We kind of had to make a guess. So we thought we actually, between the county. The city, we, well, I just followed Dave's, you know, steps on his calculations actually and working with our vendor that we have that helps us with our agricultural program. And they thought about a 2%, somewhere there is what we needed to increase. But then when the final inputs and stuff came in, actually, you know, we should have been decreasing. So, but we were just trying to make a guess on what we thought they were and some educated guess from someone. So that's where that came into play. So the. Assess values overall, though, even though we did have a higher than that equalization order to reduce was because we had increased a little on our first estimation. So overall assessed values went down an average of 5.1%. I've noticed that looking around the whole eastern kind of side, I think it's our, with our topography and stuff. I'm assuming it's probably tied, I didn't dig real deep into this, but I think it's probably tied into more of our, the hay numbers and stuff that came back is like Clayton Almacki. Jackson Dubuque, we seem to have a higher percent that it went down than other areas of the state that was more just probably corn and bean stuff. So that's where it must have been the reporting of those numbers of, that changed quite a bit for us. So due to the statewide decrease in these assessed values requirement, that same thing was mentioned before with the res, that 3% allowable growth, ag rollback. Would change from 89.05 or 04, what it went to from the 84.03. So we can take an example on this and see what that really does in another calculation. So taking the property too that had $100,000 assessed value, take it times that rollback factor last year of point 840305. Got a taxable value of $84,031. So this year with that decrease in the. Equalization order to put on there would take that value to 94,900, that rollback factor changing. To the point 89042 would then take the property to 84,500. So looking at the percent of change technically, you know, on this example, you're showing that it's overall, you know, decrease in assessment on the average of 5.1. That rollback going up 5.96 that we actually had a little bit of a taxable value increase on this. So even though the values went down, rollback factor, you know, being involved with this, it's, it's basically kind of just telling you really looking at it. Large, you know, overall that it's, didn't change a whole lot, tactical values about the same as what it was the year before. So then on to the multi-residential. So these consist of apartment buildings, the manufactured home parks, nursing homes. And. Used to be included with, in the commercial, but then they separated it out. Some years back and slowly the rollback factor, which we'll get into is. Been slowly getting down to what it's going to be with residential. So with multi-residential inside Dubuque, our assessed value increased average of 3.4%. Like Billy, we'd mentioned before, outside Dubuque, the assessed values increased 9.7% from that equalization order. Basically, county didn't have hardly any sales, if any, to actually try to make an estimate to see what it went on. So. That's where they came up with that at. And the rollback factor now, and this is a statutory thing that they put in that decreases every year three. Rollback factor went down 3.75 percentage year. So the rollback factor last year was at 67.5. This year it's a 63.75. So that decrease, obviously, less taxable value there. The multi-residential properties will also become residential for 2022. And this reduction in taxable value is not reimbursed. It's not reimbursed by the state.
If I could say so.
Yep.
So the multi-res, when that goes to residential, what do we say, res currently is point 54%?
Yes.
Those will actually match up for 2022. So the rollback factor is going to be significantly lower for multi-residential for 2022. For assessment year 2022. So when we have this meeting next year, those values will reflect that for substantial profit. So.
Absolutely. So then just an example of this, like we did with the other two classes. Last year, if you had a assessed value of 100,000 times this point 675 rollback factor gives you assessed taxable value of 67.5. This year, that value overall, the average would be 106,600, rollback factor of point 6375 gives you a taxable value of 67,958. That percent of change then is 6.6%. The assessed value. Lose 5.6% the rollback factor. So the overall taxable valuation in this example was point 7%. Industrial parcels. Overall, there's really no widespread assessed value changes, only parcel-specific changes. Industrial isn't one of the classes that they equalize either. Just had enough sales on that, so they don't mess with that. Overall, didn't have really any sales, so we didn't really make any adjustments. Didn't have a whole lot of movement and even in industrial, I didn't anyways, the city overall valuation changes either for the year. The rollback factor for industrial remains at the 90%. Commercial and industrial used to be at 100%. So that, when that went from 100% graduated to 95 and then 90, it's been at 90% ever since. That's probably been going on about, I think, eight years now, somewhere in there. So when, when they did that, from that 100% down to 90%, the state reimbursed that difference to begin with. But they based it on the 2015 year. And, and anything that's grown since then. Hasn't really been taken into effect since they locked in at 2015 year. So with that, we've seen the amount that we get reimbursed by the state go down each year. And that's, is because we're, our value, our percent of our 2015 year in comparison to other areas of the state is less than what it was. I'm basing a lot of that probably on the Wind Tower valuations. There's some counties that have had a lot of, of that growth. Which is, you know, on commercial industrial property. So they, that's value has gone up a lot. So then they, that's spread a little bit more over to there is why there's been. The difference in that amount that's gone down every year. So we've lost $40,000 from the numbers that I got from the treasurer's office. In regards to that from the previous year. Now this amount's going to continue to go down and it will get to that on some new legislation coming up. That it's, they're out, they are phasing this out. So that reimbursement is actually going to go down 2-0 eventually for the next eight years. So the revaluation notes on commercial parcels inside Dubuque. Minimal change, changed to point 5% overall outside Dubuque. They've had an overall change of point 7% increase due to revaluation, just like last, last year, same as industrial, that rollback factors mentioned of that 90%. And it's the same as just was mentioned before about being reimbursed with the, that 10% difference. Same thing as the industrial. So. The 2021 overall assessed value changes. Agricultural at a minus 5.2%. Residential and the ag dwellings inside Dubuque, we increased 10.3%. Outside of Dubuque was 8.7% increase. The multi-res was 2.9% and overall 19.9% increase. And the rest of the county. Commercial was 2.2% inside Dubuque and 4.1 respectively for the rest of the county. Industrial relatively no change in Dubuque and 2.2% increase in assessed value in the rest of the county. And then another, next chart, just explaining just new, new construction evaluations overall. Agricultural. Really minimal either way, inside Dubuque and outside. In the rural and in other cities, ag dwellings. That's a new construction there. And in other cities and in the rural residential inside Dubuque, 17, you know, point 8 million, 24. Almost 25 million outside in other cities and 18 million in the rural. Multi-res. Not a lot in this last year in Dubuque, but outside in the county had quite a bit.
Dyersville, there's, I believe, one other major multi-res project. Unfortunately, those are tipped. So we're not going to see additional revenue that comes from that, but we did have some pretty substantial projects for multi-res.
And then commercial, we had 19 million in city Dubuque, seven, a little over seven and a half million, the other cities and five million in the rural. And industrial, looks like you had some in. Had a little bit in the other cities there, 3 million. So the total was 109 million, 311, 243 for 2021 compared to the 98. 98 million, that was in 2020.
I'm just. So the city, the 109 is the total of, of all, all three, all three columns, city, other.
Yep.
Other cities and rules.
Yep, that's, you can't evolve it. Yep.
Thank you.
And then the next. So then here's just the 10-year review of taxable valuation changes. So. Showing this, this year of 5, 5.938 billion dollars compared to the previous year of 5.728 billion. Which be an increase there, 3.7% of overall taxable value. One year to the next, but there's just kind of the continuation of showing the 10 years. Of that. Then the next chart. Was the taxable evaluations by class that happened from 2020 and 2021. So for the agricultural land and outbuildings. 385, 755, 960 in 2020 and 388, 988, 090, 095 for 2021. So that tells you the. The difference, the amount there and then the percent of change that it changed. Then you can do the same thing down for the residential, that which also includes the ag dwellings there in column two. Basically, if you go down, looking down the line there, that was 132. Million, 551, 828, so a 4% increase. Multi-residential overall actually went down of that taxable evaluation. So that would have been mostly do, even though there was an increase in some of the multi-res. The taxable valuations going down because of that rollback factor going down each year. And then in commercial. There was overall 24 million, 93,00296 increase in taxable valuations from 21 compared to 20, which was a 2.4% increase. And then industrial, there was a 1.6% as you see that. Just a 2.858 million there. Just kind of thought that maybe that this year I just put that chart in there, it might kind of help you just kind of show you when you think about. With the different classes and what's overall taxable value changes, if that's a helpful slide for you or not, I don't know. You don't really care. It's in there, I don't have to put it in there either, but I just thought maybe it'd help you.
Gives you real dollars rather than percentages.
Right. Yep. And then just talking about how much is redirected towards TIF. So this number. I got this out of the. A lot of what we see on our side really isn't on the TIF side of things, but I got this from the Department of Management's website, also some of these other figures that we get. So showing the. How much was redirected towards TIF for 2021. 602 million. What was that a difference between the 2020 number? It looks like 9.4%. What a change from the 2020. 2020 year. And then on the next slide, just kind of shows comparison to other similar type of counties as we have and just kind of just showing you a bar graph here of. What we have in millions of dollars of, of value that's redirected towards TIF. Dubuque being just a little over that 600,000 that it showed. Dubuque being just a little over that six hundred thousand that it showed, Woodbury is pretty similar, Potawatomi. And it looks like Potawatomi has been going down, so they must have had, having some that's coming off a TIF, I'm assuming, but I don't know for sure. Story at three hundred and then Blackhawk at a little over six hundred. Million. So then, we're going on with new legislation, so there was two main key things I just wanted to mention today that was, you know, reflective back to really what's changing of overall for you when you're worried about budgets and valuations, or, you know, taxable valuations. Was House File four eighteen, which Billy had mentioned earlier here on reclassifying multi-residential to residential. So when they started graduate, when they took multi-residential, created multi-residential out of commercial and they graduated that down that three and three quarter percent every year. It was written in the legislation back then, I think that was Senate File two ninety five, remember right, in two thousand and fifteen, they started to do that, then it, it, it was written in that legislation, it said by twenty twenty two assessment year, it would equal residential. So last year, the Department of Revenue asked the legislature if they would just go ahead and if it's supposed to equal the residential rollback, just put multi-res in with residential, so. Starting for twenty twenty two, multi-residential will be residential, which means that rollback factor will be the same. With that, like I mentioned, the point six three seven five that it's at right now, it will equal whatever residential is at, at that time, I'm guessing somewhere you would see if your multi-residential property, it could be about I figure twelve to fourteen percent decrease in, in actual taxable evaluation that will be there from twenty one to twenty twenty two. But I'm just kind of guessing on what I think that rollback factor may be for residential by then, so there'll be a little less, obviously, there'll be some less taxable value in, in multi-residential for twenty twenty two.
The nice thing is multi-residential doesn't make up a huge chunk of the overall valuation, so it doesn't affect us as much as, say, an Iowa City or some of those places which have huge chunks of multi-residential, but it is something that will affect values.
I had a, I had a chart I was going to show on that percentage wise, and I thought I'd remember, but it's, it's pretty small, I think overall, I think it was less than two percent of our overall taxable valuation is multi-res, so I mean implications overall won't be as much, but on an individual basis with multi-residential property owners, they will see a difference there. So just kind of apprise you to that. So then Senate File six nineteen, the reduction and eventual elimination of the commercial industrial backfill. So what I mentioned like that with earlier, that ten percent difference between that hundred percent and that ninety percent that was locked in off that twenty fifteen value. Is that, it looks like by the year twenty twenty nine, that, that valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty nine, I believe, that will be gone, that ten percent. So that, earlier in the slides, what did I say that was reimbursed, the, from last year, seven hundred, was it seven hundred and some, seven hundred and some thousand dollars that was currently being reimbursed by the state, you know, back to the county, and that was for, that amount was for how much it's, it's back to your funds, not overall, it's for the others, you know, the other taxing entities. So that will be, you know, gone by then, so you'll see that seven hundred and some thousand dollars every year, it's taken off an eighth of that is going to be less. And be one eighth less every year, so, just to kind of let you know that, so that's what that's going to happen for new legislation. Looking ahead, we've got now, this slide for some reason, yeah, kind of got goofy, so you can, I don't know why, did it backwards, but it did, I noticed I'm like, oh well. So the, most properties for twenty twenty two, since I mentioned before, we're on these two year cycles, the, even year not being a revaluation year, we won't see changes due to revaluation in one class based off of the sales, so it'll just be kind of an individual basis, new construction, that sort of stuff, that'll go on for twenty twenty two. Agricultural, like I said, agricultural land and outbuildings, they'll be, are assessed, assessed on that productivity, ag and productivity, their approach, so they will not really see any changes, you know, going on for twenty twenty two valuation, other than what that rollback factor will be applied and just individual changes on a, you know, on a property, you know, if they're adding or taking away anything. So the twenty twenty two assessments are just going to keep that same twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen crop years. For residential, the looking ahead, twenty twenty one home sales have been on a steady increase. You know, for twenty twenty two, it's not a revaluation year, so we won't be making adjustments based off of these twenty one sales, two thousand and twenty one sales. They'll be for twenty twenty two, it'll mostly just be the change in new construction in that, I know Billy's where they're working on some revaluation projects, so he may have some individual areas or cities that they're working on that they may see some revaluation done on, but overall, there won't be a market adjustment for twenty twenty two. But just kind of looking at the trending, it, looking and seeing if it's going to continue on the way it's continuing right now, you know, we're seventeen point two percent below our sale prices inside Dubuque and outside Dubuque, they're twelve and a half percent below. The local, the East Central Iowa Association of Realtors email we got last week from them, I was reporting similar findings, saying inside Dubuque, surrounding areas were up seven percent from the prior year and the average the number of homes were up seven percent and the average sale price increased eight percent during the year.
This is going to be, twenty twenty three is going to be potentially pretty ugly with the assessments we send out. The nice thing is, as these charts show you, those other factors kind of play in, so the tax ramifications don't necessarily go along with those assessments. Because what we've seen around the entire state is everybody's got ridiculous markets right now, so as long as we're in line with the rest of the state, then the tax change should stake similar to that three percent, because if we have, if we were way way above what everybody else was doing, then we could have ramifications where we'd have much higher percentages. But as of what we're seeing right now, it's pretty, the market that we have is pretty much the way it is across the state, so there's going to be substantial, substantial changes for twenty twenty three that may not really reflect in time when taxes come to pay for it.
And then on commercial and industrial, like I mentioned before, that backfill rate will continue to drop and eliminated for the fiscal year twenty twenty nine. They'll be gone, and then a multi-residential also, like I mentioned before, the will now become part of the residential class properties, so that rollback will then match the residential. Any questions? Comments? And even if any questions, not right now, like I said, I've, like I always said before, either one of us a question, email, you can always get ahold of us.
One comment I would have, and maybe you can provide some follow up or commentary on it. It looks as if a significant amount of our growth has come outside of the city of Dubuque and that continues to escalate. And so my quick napkin calculations that only roughly over sixty percent of our growth is outside the city of Dubuque in, in kind of all categories when you summarize it. So have you noticed that shift in trend and, do you have any information over the last five years on that, that you can maybe provide us in the future?
Sure, we can put something together, so yeah, I haven't looked at, gone back to look from year to year, but it would be interesting to look at that, see.
Yeah, if you jump back to your slide, I think you had a hundred and nine million dollars in, in new assessment, new development, and roughly thirty eight percent of it came from the city of Dubuque, thirty eight million of it.
Yeah, that was
That's a significant change in, in my life.
Or a hundred and nine million was the increase in overall assessment, doesn't necessarily mean that was all new construction.
Correct, yeah, the assessment would be, would be double that, most likely as far as, you know, fair enough. Well, if it's residential, it'd be almost double.
I would say the trend I personally notice as I'm doing commercial appraisal this year for the first time, Dave always kind of took care of that. The workload that Troy's under for commercial versus what I'm at, seems like the city is getting a bunch of commercial revenue. We look at residential, it seems like everybody's trying to get out of the city to build out all those acreages and stuff like that, so residential seems like there's definitely a huge push towards getting out of the city, but commercial seems like city is where it's at.
And you're seeing some of your other cities, though. A lot of girls there.
One question for your multi-residents, is that taken into consideration like condos? Or are they considered like two separate residences?
Condos are residential, there's going to be a lot less of a distinction between the two of them when we, after, you know, starting from twenty twenty two. But they are condos are residential currently.
So are, are you seeing like a condo like as in a big unit where there's say fifty
If it has a regime.
The side by side, there's
Right, it's actually a house, but it's connected to another house.
Right, to that, yeah, yeah.
Might be three, four. Classified as a multi, it's one structure per se, but
Most of those are divided down that party wall already, and a lot of times even when they're plotted, they might be the whole lot, and then they're going to build, let's say, six units. And then they'll divide that, so it'll actually be six individual lots, so we have that as residential already. So before that, it was always, there was three or more units on one parcel, it's multi-residential. The other one, when you mentioned the condos, I was, just to kind of tell you, what I'm suspecting to see coming down the road is that these large apartments, back in the day, they'd have, you know, essentially used for apartments, but let's just say it's a four hundred unit apartment complex, right? And they would, they would file for condominium and file the horizontal property regime and all that, saying it's condominium, still operating it as a rental, as an apartment rental, but saying now there's four hundred condo units in there, have no intention of selling that unit, of still renting it out. But since now you've just legally described four hundred individual units, they're actually residential. So back in the day when multi-residential was part of commercial and you were at that hundred percent, there was no rollback factor at all. And residential's been bouncing around this, you know, high forties to like sixty percent range, so just, let's just say for simplicity here, about half, right? So it's, if you have a hundred thousand dollar, you know, dwelling, you were paying taxes on fifty thousand, you had a hundred thousand dollar commercial property, you paid taxes on a hundred thousand dollars. So that's kind of what they did, what they call the condo loophole back in the day, is they would condo these big we have enough, a lot of those, and they would condo them out, still operate them as an apartment, but then now they would get switched to residential, so then they would get that residential rollback. So now I'm starting to see them dissolve those and then changing back into a, a one unit into a one, you know.
The incentive just isn't really there as much anymore, the changes to, you know, multi-res and then that's factoring into now residential. It just, yeah, I mean, half your tax burden, I mean, that's a pretty good incentive to, to go through these regimes, but with the changes they've done in legislation, they're really moving away from that.
The other questions?
I don't, and do you have anything? I have nothing, good.
Okay, well, thank you everyone, yeah, you bet.
So we will work on actionable, getting the ag formula to you guys and then a fiber trend of the, the evolution from city to county for, for new construction.
Yeah, and, and when you do the city to, you know, small towns plus the rural, if you could include the percentage of a whole. So, you know, historically it'd been, you know, sixty five, thirty five, now it might be sixty forty.
Right.
As far as the percentage from city to Dubuque versus kind of the rural versus the rest of the small towns.
Thank you Troy and Billy, I appreciate your assistance also outside the meeting, so thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thanks again Troy and Billy, good presentation.
Thank you, and just one quick thing too, just to put something, turn this budget time of everything, so I had I, I know in the past with our, with our boards, with our conference boards, we usually try to meet, you know, back to back, just because we have a lot of the same people in both of the boards, your, your, your board being one of them, that sits on both these boards, so I had just reached out, I had a conversation with the new mayor yesterday, I believe, yeah, yesterday we're lunch, so he, I'm just trying to say if we want to kind of continue the same thing, we're going to have him the same dates and times, he thinks that still would be a great idea to do that. We've had him in the west campus the last two years, you know, he thinks that's still probably a great idea, if you guys are good with that, and we were just trying to nail down some dates. Initially, we usually did around that first week or so in February. I wrote down some dates that worked for him, just to kind of start this ball rolling.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear any of that conversation at all.
Troy had brought up about the conference board meeting with the city. Looking at possibly the eighth, ninth, or tenth, I said the tenth, we have a budget work session from one to four, I said the eighth and ninth, I would be available if you have your schedule up.
And we usually did those in the like, four o'clock, three, three, four o'clock, five o'clock range, and they would do back to back with one county conference board and then the city conference board or vice versa. I know the last couple of years we've done ours on the end, because I know we had one council member that was trying to finish the school bus route, so he was trying to make it sometime after.
My recollection is the, the school has the largest conflict, they have a strong preference for a day of the week, have you considered that?
Yeah, yeah, we just, I had just talked to Brad last, yesterday on that, Brad Kavanaugh, to try to get some dates from him, so I thought while I was going to see you guys today, I would mention that, and then my next step was to get ahold of the school board, I think Joanie Lucas is usually who I reach out with, and then just to kind of get some dates from her too, so.
Local workforce meeting five thirty on the eighth, so the ninth would be the only day I'd be available, if it's going to be late like that.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll start reaching out and get some dates up. Time to work, you got the ninth there, it works best for Harley, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you Troy.
Have a good one, thanks.
We'll move to the general discussion on valuations, levies and budget process.
Hello everyone, can you hear me okay in the boardroom? Okay, great.
Ed, can I, Ed, Ed, can I ask a favor, can you grab me some water, and we can keep going, let's keep going. You feel me, well, on the run, I'm, I'm sorry about that, Jay. Thank you.
So, thank you to Billy and Troy for that great presentation on our assessments. I put a memo into your packet that just kind of talks about the process from there, so we start with, the auditor's office takes those assessments from the assessors and turns those into the valuations, and so we receive as a county and all the other taxable bodies, we receive our valuations by January first every year. And so those valuations from twenty twenty, January first, twenty twenty one are used for our FY twenty three budget year, so we're two years behind essentially. And let me screen share those, those were attached in the packet, so the areas that are highlighted are kind of the, the numbers that we really look at for our calculation purposes. So our general, overall county levies, general basic and general stuff. We use that five point three billion dollar valuation. That is a year over year increase of a hundred and fifty seven million, which equates to three percent overall. And so every one cent change in our levy, either increases or decreases our taxes generated by fifty three thousand dollars. Then if we look at debt service, we are able to calculate debt service on all properties, including TIF properties. So that number is higher, that's the five point nine billion dollars. So that's a year over year increase, like the assessors were talking about, a three point seven percent overall. And so our debt service levy generates more dollars because of that higher valuation. So that is fifty nine thousand, three seventy five for every change in cent in the levy in one set. And then the very top number of one point six billion, one point five nine seven billion, that's what we use for our rural valuations. So that increased year over year, thirty three million, which was two point one percent. And that generates almost sixteen thousand dollars of revenue, up or down, as our levy changes. So that's just our inherent growth. I also attached the last thirteen years of history, Troy and Billy kind of walked through a lot of that, but that's in the packet for your reference. So you can go back and look at that information as you need it, but we've experienced growth year over year consistently. And for the last ten, I think I put thirteen years in there. So any questions on that, I know we just went through a bunch of that already, but that's summarized in that memo for you. So really, the, the county, the county board of supervisors, you have So really, the the county, the county board of supervisors, you have four categories of levies that you can assess. So general county services are on all taxable property within the county. And these are broadly defined as services, which are primarily intended to benefit all residents of the county. Then we have the rural services. So those are on all taxable property, not within. Incorporated areas of the county. And those are services primarily intended to benefit persons residing outside of incorporated areas. Then you can levy for debt service, and that's on all taxable property, including TIF property. And then there's some other miscellaneous type of levies provided by law. Um, we're not currently assessing those. Uh, we currently assess um several different levies, and let me post up, screen share different. So we currently um use um in the FY twenty-two year, the general basic levy, the general supplemental levy. The MHDS levy, debt service, and then the rural basic levy. And the general basic, general services is limited to three dollars and fifty cents per thousand dollars evaluation. Uh, we are at the cap on that. We will remain at the cap on that, uh, because. In order to levy the general supplemental levy, you have to be at the max on general basic. Um, general sup is limited in its purposes um under code, but it's mostly for. Insurance benefits, um, some other miscellaneous things like elections, um. Those kind of things. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, general uh in general insurances as well. And the MHDS fund, um, Senate File six nineteen passed in the twenty twenty-one legislation. Eliminated this levy. So this is the last year that we will see this levy um for Dubuque County. And in fact, um, after we set our levy, the legislation had passed that, that uh, that legislation, and they came back in and reduced our levy even further. So I'm trying to, I don't remember exactly where we set it last year, but they reduced it down to point three nine seven two eight cents per thousand. Uh, then debt service, um, we levy exactly what we need to pay our general obligation bonds issued by the county. Currently, we have three issues um outstanding. Those were for the uh nine-one-one radio system. The West Campus building construction and then the courthouse roof remodel and replacement. And the courthouse roof will uh drop off next year. So that was a five-year. Issue. So the FY twenty-three tax levy will be the last year that we're assessing for that roof project. So overall, our countywide levy for FY twenty-two was five point seven four zero zero nine. So that's assessed across um everyone in the county. Uh, regardless of where your property is. Then the rural basic is that rural levy that's assessed. Outside of incorporated areas. So we have been at three point six five nine oh two for a long time. Um, the max on that is three point nine five, which we haven't gone to, uh, but there is a max within there. Of three point zero zero three seven five for uh roads. So we have been at the max for roads uh for quite a while, but not to the max on that levy in totality. And if we were to get to that max, there is then another levy that you could use called rural supplemental. Which would be the same thing as general supplemental, but only for the rural services. So. We haven't had the need to do that at this time, and I don't foresee that soon, but just letting you know that's out there. Um, so this is the preliminary tax calculation, and and what I done here um is just made some assumptions. Just for discussion purposes. So if you were to leave your levy at exactly where it was for last year. So the to- total levy of nine point three nine nine one one. This is what it would look like across all of our funds. So we stay at three fifty for our general basic. It shifts most of that differential to general sup. So there's a a larger increase in that fund. MHDS goes to zero. We know that's going away and our debt service is set. So we know exactly where that needs to be. That's point three six one nine four cents. And leaving rural basic the same. So that's just what it would look like should you choose to not change your levy at all. And what that equates to really is um because of our inherent growth. It looks, so if you remember, um, Senate File six thirty-four created a separate. Um, public hearing that we have to have that talks only about general services and rural services. And so if we did that, um, it never factored in our MHDS services into that. So that going away doesn't change anything in that, but shifting those, that levy into the general supplemental levy makes that look like. We're increasing. Or i- it shows that we would be increasing our general services levy to- in totality. So two point one three percent on rural services, that's just due to the the growth that we've had in our values. And then eleven point five seven on those general services. And that would be due to growth in values and switching um funding from MHDS to general supplemental. So this will all change as you work through your budget and, you know, work through your levy, but this is just for um. An example, example purposes. So what this spreadsheet also shows is just that what those changes are in. Um, levy cents and also tax dollars. So you can see our evaluation changes. General basic, no levy change, general supplement, it would be a forty-one cent increase to that levy. MHDS a decline, a decrease, debt service a decrease. Um. So overall, no change in the overall levy, but it this breaks out how those dollars actually break down. And then just some information on here. It's just to help you reference as you walk through this, what each one cent, ten cent or one dollar change means. In a levy. So for the general services, a one cent change is the fifty-three thousand, like we s- like I said before. Debt service fifty-nine thousand, rural services, uh, just under sixteen thousand for one cent change. Um. And then down below, um, further, we show what the each debt service levy. Each debt service issuance means to the levy and then the total. And then within the rural levy, um, those dollars are uh taken in to the rural levy and then uh. Put out to different departments. So secondary roads is at their maximum, and then that shows what they get from the rural levy. The library also resides within that area zoning. Uh, we have another, some other miscellaneous expenses from there. For example, our contract with the uh Humane Society for Stray Animals, things of that nature, kind of out in the rural services. So you can s- see um what our three point six five nine oh two generates and where that goes to. There's many services out of there. So this is just for example purposes, but I wanted to give you that. Um, and then based on that, I've taken the fund balances. So let me pull that up quick. So in these fund balances, I've just taken that example calculation. And I've used um all of the operating budgets from all the departments, plug those in. Uh, with no changes for wages, um, no changes for capital projects. So this just shows if you were to make no changes to your levy this year. And make no uh project or wage changes, this is what your fund balances would look like. Now, we know this is not where we're gonna end up. But this just shows you um where you have uh availability for spending. To do those um improvements or changes in your budget. So these look probably higher um today, but just keep in mind that there's a lot of stuff that's not made it into the budget yet, because you haven't seen it or made any decisions on it. So as those decisions will make, are made, um, we'll start plugging the things into the budget and making the changes here. Um, any questions so far? I know that's a lot. Keep walking through, and then we can kind of circle back. Um, so beginning with FY twenty-one, like I mentioned, the Senate File six thirty-four created those new budget requirements. And so that created a new public hearing. Uh, we have to create a maximum crap property tax. Asked for general services and rural services and hold a public hearing on that and pass that by a resolution. Then um that resolution, if it changes more than two percent in any year, has to pass by a two-thirds majority. Which uh we, all of the things that we do pass by that because of our three percent board. Um, and like I said, our organic growth um in all of these funds was three percent in general funds and two point one percent in our rural funds. So. Um, we're already above those one hundred and two percent increases, just by the nature of our growth in the county. Then after that, um, that uh resolution is adopted, you can set your date, place and time for your public hearing officially. On the full budget. And then the final budget that you propose or pass cannot exceed those maximum property tax asking. That was set in that first resolution. And part of this also extended our budget deadline. So a couple of years ago, um, anyone on the board might remember that we were. To be done by March fifteenth, they extended our deadline out to March thirty-first because of those additional public hearings. Um, Troy and Billy also talked about um Senate File six nineteen a little bit, so that was passed in the last legislative session. Um, that phases out our state commercial and industrial replacement payments, which we call the backfill most often. Um, that was created, and I looked it up, it was the two thousand thirteen legislation later legislative session. And that stated that commercial, industrial and railroad properties would receive a rollback of ninety percent of their one hundred percent valuation. And the state pledged at that time to make replacement payments to offset that valuation reduction. And like they said, that was held at a two thousand fifteen valuation. So over time, the portion that we have received has decreased. They officially in the legislate uh legislative session last year. Um, eliminated those backfill payments. So they'll phase out um over an eight-year period. So FY twenty-two to FY twenty-nine is the phase out schedule. Um, I've attached that as well, and I can uh share that. Um, counties were either on a. Five-year or eight-year phase out. And we are on an eight-year phase out. So that's um takes us out to twenty twenty-nine. Make that a little bit bigger. This has all the counties in it. You can see their phase up, phase out amounts, but um. Last year, um, I think we received just over eight hundred thousand. Um, a- across all funds. And this year, they're projecting, this is the state's projections, um, that we would receive seven hundred and eighty thousand. Across all funds for the backfill, and this phases out um about a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next eight years. I would say about half of that backfill payment um is allocated to general basic and the uh remaining half across the other funds. So this is significant over time. You know, when it started out, we were receiving about a million dollars, and it's reduced um over each year. Uh, due to the things that Troy and Billy were talking about, how it's spread across the state. Uh, based on that one year where they froze it, but this is a a big number that will phase out of our budget over time. So one thing to keep in mind as we walk through everything, um, fortunately, they're not doing it all at once. We do phase out over eight years. Then the other big legislative change from last year um was that Senate File six nineteen, which changed the funding of MHDS. Services, so mental health services changed from a property tax base to a state appropriation. So. The funding of that will come out of the state general funds. So it eliminated our MHDS levy. And it eliminates our MHDS Fund ten uh beginning next year. The, we still belong to the MHDS region. And the legislative bodies uh said we need to execute a twenty-eighty agreement. With our region to prescribe how that works. So I think every region will probably operate slightly differently. Um. That's just an assumption. I haven't, uh, none of the agreements have probably been executed at this time. They'll be similar. Um, and what that does now is creates another sub-fund. So they said. We no longer have general fund or, excuse me, general fund, uh, MHDS Fund ten. We have uh a new sub-fund of the general fund, zero 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 six. So that will be new in your information this year. And what happens is uh we won't be paying for services anymore, but we will be reimbursed by the region on a quarterly basis. For operating expenses. So that is personnel and their operating costs. So at the end of this year, so by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, we have to take whatever fund balance, we need to budget that. Um, whatever we have left goes to the region as of June thirtieth. And then the region will deposit back to us uh prior to July first. One-fourth of the operating expenses uh for next year. So we're still kind of working out how this all happens. Um, and uh Anne Cameron and May will be here next week. Really to walk through their budget, um, just the Dubuque County budget, not the regional budget, and then how that, how that really interplays. Um, with us.
Stella, if I can stop you there for a minute. Um, what's interesting to me is that what is reimbursed by the region. It, when you get into the minutia of that, it it's different per county. So some counties are more aggressive in saying those are operational costs than others. And I don't have any way to compare one county to another. Um, but that's. That's what we want to make sure is that we're being made whole for um. Cell phone coverage, um, anything that we might perceive, you know, office supplies. And there's been discussion about whether there should be a credit card issued by the region for regionals. For our county regional staff, and I'm not sure that's occurring. So we, we want to be together with the auditor, tracking that, I think, as aggressively as we can. Um, IT expenses, IT support, all of those things, I think, if we're not already accounting for those, we, we want to do that.
Yeah, very good points. Um, I would say our, our budget encompasses most of those things. I think one thing that you said, IT support. Um, we would have to come up with some indirect cost rate back to them of that nature, but I think we're all encompassing of everything else. And and there's discussion.
Right. So when you think about IT support, wha- what about HR support? There are lots of supports that we give. We have the CEO of the region here. So um, you know, operational supports. Um, paying of claims. I I do think that we want to make sure that we are adequately um bringing back to the taxpayers. Our share of that. Um, some counties are are very aggressive. I don't know how we s- I don't know how we stand out with regard to that. But I think we want to be forward-thinking about it.
Yeah, very good and very good stuff. Um, we do allocate, um, through our cost allocation report that we do annually. Uh, services out to them. So that would include, you know, as I think about it, um, the auditor support, the HR support. We do get that cost allocation report done annually, and we do charge them back for some of that stuff. We would just need to really dig into that, make sure we're including everything that we intend to include. So.
Yeah, we'll need to do that now.
Mm-hmm.
Because the region is preparing its budget as well.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna, you'll. So you're gonna, you'll keep an eye on that then. I mean, I don't have it. I don't have any way to track that.
Sure. Yep, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Sorry, just noting that for myself. Okay. So those are, you know, big changes within our budget for FY twenty three, um, that we have to keep in mind. And then, of course, I just put in the packet, um, the legislative timetable. Cause these things obviously greatly affect us. So we just need to keep an eye on legislation, um, as it comes up. Um, and even this, uh, Senate File six nineteen was passed after, signed by the governor after we were officially done with our budget. So they did come back and adjust our budget after the fact. So everything that the state is doing is very impactful to us. So we need to just keep an eye on that. Um, and we do, um, we do that. So, um, just another overview, um. We can continue discussing this stuff today and questions on what I've gone through. Then we'll move on. Today, um, we'll talk about our purchase of services and your supervisor departmental budget. And then start to hear from other, um, in the coming days, um, other departments on their operations. Their capital requests and their A R P A requests. And we've act, we've asked all internal departments to present their ARPA requests, um, during their budget time. So we can start working through those as well. Um, and of course, we talk about compensation board, we talk about general wages, benefits. And then our last work sessions are always designed for your discussion of everything, your review of everything. And then setting of the tax levy, um, in the end. So I just put in there, final decisions need to be made on the budget by February tenth. Um, that gives time to just complete the state forms and set the first public hearing on, uh, that max. Maximum tax asking. And so we plan that will be done, um, the first public hearing would be on March seventh. On the maximum property tax dollars, which you would adopt by resolution. Then we would set officially the public hearing on the full budget for March twenty first. And then, um, that would be held and adopted by resolution. And that gives time for the auditor to certify the budget to the state by March thirty first, which is our deadline. So I just outlined that in a memo for everybody. Happy to answer any questions on all of that. I know that was a lot of information. Um, to go through at once.
I do see that Tim English is here with us and I know that's item five on our agenda. Um, would it be possible and as to share if we can, certainly we can, you know, wrap up questions here. But do, can we do a courtesy and, and move that forward?
I would not have an issue with it, Jay.
Budget is pretty important. I would finish the budget, maybe we're done. So I would finish the budget and then move on to that item on the agenda, but.
Right, well.
Questions, I'm, I'm fine. I don't have any questions. I'm fine with the information. I'm very, it's all good news. Uh, so well done Stella. Well done taxpayers. Well done developers, um, puts us in a very good position to have a lot of, uh, a lot of options.
But we have some discussion on the purchase of service and, uh, our budget. I believe the I cap one was just on the insurance renewals for, uh, updates on that to see if there is how much of an increase.
Right. And that's why I thought maybe we could move that forward. That was, I, I, uh, I held the two claims from payment this week. Um, just getting an opportunity to talk to you about increases, the, it, it seemed like they were in major increases. And I, I didn't sign the claim, just wanting to know generally, um, I don't, you know, need to have the detail that you included. But just generally some awareness of the increases we're facing.
So I'm done with Stella and the budget. My colleagues, you guys still need, do you have questions for Stella on the budget overall? I mean, we'll be meeting again, but maybe we can just wrap the session up if we're in a hurry to get to the next.
Well, there'd be extensive probably discussion on the purchase of service and our budget. Instead of making Tim wait until after that is.
Right. I'm just saying this moment, this section with Stella that we, you know, that we have in front of us. There was like six documents. Seven, and I'm comfortable with all seven. So I'm good. I'm just asking you two if you're good.
I would just have one question, and I don't know the answer to it. That's why I'm going to ask. Eventually, probably somewhere in the future, we may have to come up with like an E M A levy.
So, so that falls into, if you, um, remember where I was talking about, you have the ability to set four types of levies. That kind of levy falls in that other bucket of other levies. And the state has said, um, if you want to use something of that nature, we need to reach out to them. To see how that kind of thing works. So they would help us through any of that.
Okay, uh, just a question. Would it be something that we should be looking at now? Being that mental health levy is gone. To maybe start an E M A levy at a lower rate that say four years down the road, whatever. I'm just using numbers here. We have something built up in that, that if the dispatch does go regional for movement.
I would have to talk with them. I don't know that you would be able to start it and build it up. Um, that's, that's something I just don't know the answer to, um, and have to research further. But I can certainly, um, start that discussion if the board is interested in that.
Harley, I appreciate you asking that question in public session, let me say, because if we're, if we're thinking that. And I know the regionalization of emergency, uh, dispatch is certainly something that we think is on the horizon. I think it's wise to explore it because I don't think we're just setting this budget. If it's a budget related discussion. I think we should look ahead and see what that might mean, whether it's something that we actually address. You know, we have to pursue for twenty three fiscal year twenty three, or it's something that we're going to look at for twenty four. But I appreciate you raising that at the same time that we can all be hearing that discussion. I would, I would favor exploring that so that we're informed.
I didn't know the answer. Obviously Stella, Stella has to look into it deeper so I don't feel quite so bad.
Yeah, it's certainly something we could have, uh, Ed as a project manager, just review roughly what the levy calculations are for that. What do they come off to roughly how much revenue we need for that? Um, Stella's got her hands full with this budget right now. Um, and you know, certainly every budget we normally set, we are looking forward to a series of years. So I think it's also a very good question. But, um, you know, I don't believe there's any direction or any, any. Momentum for us to set that this year. Is that correct?
No, I was just, it was, it was something to start at ten cents. God, just throwing a number up. That, okay, we can build something up that four years from now, when it's ready to move, okay, we got some money started. That we have something to go with before we have to raise the levy higher, I guess.
Good concept, if that's possible. So, so maybe we could have, you know, between Ed and Stella and others, just research for the opportunities. I don't know, are any counties in Iowa already doing that? Does anybody?
No, there's discussion at the state level regarding it.
Okay.
Which, uh, I don't know where it's at at this point. I'd have to talk to Joel, but he hasn't heard anything last I talked to.
I'm ignorant as well. So, um, I think it's something we could, could look at. But, uh, right now our, uh, our financial considerations and all the other things lean to less levy, not more. In my vantage points, that's a good thing.
Why I was thinking, well, the mental health one is gone. Just you defer some of that to this and it'd still be substantially less than what it was. Just a question. I have nothing further, Jay.
I'm good. Thanks. Anne?
No, I'm comfortable with this portion.
Okay. So then, um, I think, uh, you guys have, or sorry, you have expressed, um, interest in moving it agenda item five forward. So let's go ahead and, um, I see Tim is on and I can see his face on the camera. So, um, we just want to talk quickly through the I cap renewal. And we did have a fairly large increase this year. Um, and Tim, if you want to walk through, maybe, uh, you put into a memo, but you want to walk through some of those reasons that we saw that increase.
Yes, be happy to Stella. Uh, thanks Anne from, I wasn't in a hurry, but, uh, I just had you on in the background. But, uh, appreciate moving me up. After all that good news, I hate to be the bearer of bad news. But, uh, yeah, industry, industry as a whole is seeing a very hard market right now. And it's not just I cap, it's not, it's not just Dubuque County. It's, uh, uh, throughout the, all the carriers that we represent. Uh, and I think without reading it to you, you got the memos, probably the four main reasons why, uh, your premium has gone up. Uh, the ratio, everybody's heard that a year and a half ago, uh, that's certainly a factor in this area. Covid nineteen is causing some, uh, rate fact, rate hikes, adjustments, uh. Most carriers in, uh, governmental entities are getting anywhere from a ten to twenty percent rate hike. And, uh, also they came and that's in the memo too. Uh, the risk managers came out and went through most of the Dubuque County, the larger buildings. And we, uh, they thought they were underinsured with the cost of, uh, building materials. We bumped up the blanket significantly, the property blanket, uh, that's another factor. And then over the years, they, they return all the profits back to members. As a member, you're one of the owners of the, of the pool. Two years ago, they voted not to because they were, uh, not as profitable as they had projected. And the last year also, you did not get a member credit and didn't get one this year. And that's another reason why the premium looks like it went up probably more than, uh. If we had apples to apples, the, the increase would have been about, I think, eighteen percent, wasn't it Stella? Somewhere in there.
Yeah, it was about an eighteen percent increase from FY twenty one to FY twenty two.
But we're covering more property this year is another reason, uh, why it went up. But, uh, yeah, uh, I cap at the bottom there, we, they insure seventy five out of the ninety nine Iowa counties. The other twenty four E M C out of Des Moines, sure, most of them, who we write for also. But I'm quite sure that would be. Higher than, uh, I cap premium. Um, uh, there's no doubt in my mind that we could, we could, uh. Quote it next year, but it's, it, I cap still the best game in town in, in our opinion for counties size of Dubuque. And they are endorsed, as you can see by the Iowa State Association of Counties, it's, uh. They, they have the broadest policy out there for counties and the city of Dubuque we have with I cap also. So it is, uh, it's just one of those, in my forty years in the industry, the two times the market was this hard. And this is one of them, the eighties, mid eighties were the, was the other one where the, we were seeing increases like this. Now, hopefully next year, and I was going to tell Stella, they told us the budget for twelve percent. I'm hoping it won't even be that hot, that much, but hopefully it'll stabilize a little bit and, uh. As we go forth, uh. Uh, maybe even off like it was prior to this. We went a lot of, a lot of years where it was pretty stable. If not, it would even going down with the member credit. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if, uh, anybody had or as I always tell Stella, if you got, if supervisors wish us to attend a meeting. We certainly would in person, we have in the past. And we appreciate the trust in us, our agency.
Obviously, it's a substantial increase, but, uh, when you look at the overall, uh, picture of what we have insured. Compared to what you have on your homeowner's insurance and the, the risk that the county is at. It's understandable. Obviously, being an insurance agent is somewhat like being a dentist. Everybody really likes to see it, but.
Right. I, I hear you, Harley.
And I appreciate, as I said, I appreciate you being here because for me, it, it is, it's a significant increase. And I think it builds the awareness among all the taxpayers that, that this is, this is the case. Um, it's not something we have control over, at least not how I see we could. So, um, you know, I'm imagining we'll see these same things in our, in our personal lives with insurance increases as well. So, um, as you say, you know, it's nineteen eighties, you know, it's hard to. Gosh, I was in high school, you know, how, how would you know how to evaluate that? So, um, but yeah, no, I appreciate you being here and that, that really is one reason why I just wanted to have time and opportunity for discussion. I think it helps people know as we build our budget, just some, some things are changing because of other factors.
And just as a side point, uh, I cap also ensures the fairgrounds, as you know. And they're, uh, they tailor, tailor their policies towards counties from Iowa, that almost everybody has a fair, uh. They're insuring Sunny Crest now, uh, it's just, uh, we have a unique situation in Dubuque County. But it's, uh, I feel, still think it's the broadest policy out there for, for us.
Good.
So, um, are the, uh, are the other members of I cap seeing the same percentage increases?
Yes, it's not just Dubuque County. Some may be a little less, some may be more than that, even depending on their own claims history. But, uh, it's, yeah, fifteen to twenty percent and, uh, school districts are seeing the same thing. We insure a school district that's going to get that same rate hike and it's not just Dubuque County.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
I, I just have, Harley, I have one, just one additional question and, and I'm the one who didn't sign that claim. I'm happy to come in and do that, um, just, you know, um, clerically, Stella, I think we're up against a deadline to get the payment. To the, to I cap. So I'm happy to, to come on down the hill and, and sign that claim. I'll, I'll get that done this week.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Anne.
Thank you very much, Tim. Appreciate it.
Sure. Anytime. Thank you.
But have a nice day.
Thanks, Tim.
Do we need a break or can we keep moving or?
I'm good.
Yeah. You're muted again.
I'm, I'm fine. Let's go.
Okay. Here we can move to the purchase of service program discussion.
So I believe Ed is in the room. Um, I think Ed will walk us through our discussion for where we want to go, um, in the future for our purchase of service. Yes, there he is. Hi, Ed.
Hey Stella. Yeah, so it will be helpful to me if that is a shared screen because that's what I'm looking, that would be.
Working on it. So.
And just to know while we try to get that done, but, um, where is the Dubuque County Historical Society? I, I don't, I didn't see that and I did have to read this kind of at a fast clip, but I didn't see that in here and. So maybe when you come across on that, give me a shout out about it.
Top of page four of my memo.
All right, there it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Stella. So I, uh, I'm Ed Raiber. So I, um, apologize, this is four pages of stuff, but I was, we're, this, this particular program, um, has been through a little bit of. Uh, transition in the last year and there have been a lot of things that have impacted that. So in, in this memo, uh, that we're not, I'm not making any sort of recommendation to you about what it should be. I'm just trying to lay out some information that will help the supervisors, um, uh, evaluate where we are. And, and, and maybe take some steps. So in my, uh, background there, I, I think I gave you some familiar background. So I'm not going to dwell on that, that, uh, how, what leads us to today. Um, but I did want to focus, uh, just briefly on, uh, one of the things that, uh. We've heard the supervisors talk in, uh, your public sessions and have mentioned to us outside of that about, uh. Uh, the amount that you have provided to, uh, organizations throughout the county to, uh, work on particular projects. And, uh, that's, uh, that amount, uh, having perhaps some relationship to the amount of income or revenue. That the county receives from gaming. income or revenue that the county receives from gaming taxes. There are three different gaming taxes, uh, one of which maybe worthwhile noting that there are three, one of which includes paramutual wagering at the Greyhound Park, which is likely to go uh from a relatively small number of twenty-something thousand dollars a year to a number closer to zero um as Greyhound racing ends here, so it'll probably in the future be just two different revenue streams because there are two different casinos. But in, in total, that uh has been reasonably stable at providing the county with about six hundred, roughly six hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. Which is not property tax revenue.
Did you find uh any historical or code context tying to gambling revenue to the, what we call the purchase of services?
There, there is absolutely none.
So it's just historical, maybe at some point somebody said, hey, let's give money to
That is correct.
Riverview because we have new gambling money?
Yes.
But that's really tied to the code or tied to what we've been doing.
It, it uh
You're making, you're making that connection here.
I, 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 you, you're, you're correct, um, and in my memo, I don't, I don't tie those together in any way except that, that has been a a piece of conversation I've heard from several, couple of different supervisors.
And you think it's mixed because the Dubuque Racing Association does that, which is, is in their charter?
That is in their charter. Um, it is not connected legally um around the state of Iowa, you have some college counties that have that and they use it for a wide variety of purposes, which frequently does not include using it for grants um yourself.
I, I recall um informal conversation with our previous auditor, Denise Dolan. You know, indicating that was one of the catalysts for the, the awards being made, but there, I, I've asked a few times and there was, I mean, there, we don't have a history of memos to the file like we're creating now, but so I think maybe it's somewhat folklore, but that's what I believe Denise Dolan's told me.
I think folklore is a worthy description of this in that it's been part of, I've heard that from other staff as well, so you are not obligated to do that, but i- in terms of uh uh your approach to this, I'm gonna kinda step through some other things and, and also not recommending that, there are no recommendations in what this amount should be, it's just noting that, that's what some of those revenues have been, there's been discussion that somehow they had some uh connection uh in the past, but there's been deviation from that and you're not bound by any sort of referendum that ever occurred in the past that the public voted on that ties these two together. Uh, it has been merely uh people before you that have sat in those chairs that have had a loose connection to that. What um uh, did wanna draw your attention to is that there's been a little apples to oranges. Uh, I think there were a couple of years where the Tom Hancock uh awards were part of that larger purchase of service that makes it seem like there were a couple of years when it was larger. I think this uh fiscal year that we're still in now, I think uh, I think Stella had removed that, it's its own line item, so um, I, I'm not trying to get too much in the weeds about uh exactly how these have fit together, but just to note that uh um, the supervisors, out of that uh allocation of funding that you used to call grants that we're gonna start calling purchase of service. It's included a few different things, included things like the, when you created the Tom Hancock Awards. So uh, it, it's been a flexible tool that you've used to accomplish some different things. Gonna remind you, as I scroll, I realize I'm doing that on the laptop in front of me that that's not happening there, so thank you. Whoever's doing that Stella, thank you Stella. Uh, um, just a few things that uh I think are worth noting here. The, the auditor has pointed out uh guidance from the state that is directed to the state, not necessarily to us, but um that what the state is looking for is some identification of public purpose, public purpose when the county or, or a city were to allocate resources uh to another organization. And broadly as, as staff, as we look at things, the state has sort of not in the same location or in the same way, but in different parts of legislation uh or, or the state code as they, they deal with these different areas, uh, a little bit about what the previous speaker talked about, you know, they insure the county fair because we have a special bond, counties have a special bond with the fair and in their county that goes back a long time. But in the most broad sense, economic development, uh local governments are able to use its resources to impact or affect economic development in a very broad sense. Also, there's a relationship with county fairs and historical societies that's identified there. They are treated very uh described very differently, but they're describing that they, that those groups in, in general, without having to show a bunch of other stuff, have a public purpose that the code has recognized. That doesn't mean that other things do not, but we're showing that, that, that these do and that, I think uh, if anything affects a little bit about how your staff, as we have discussed this issue, it affects how, how we look at some of these things. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'd go on to just uh, I, my next part that I called purchase of service, looking at that from a budget uh versus competitive. And this is the best I came up with in terms of how to describe this, so um you've passed a couple of these agreements in the last few meetings that you had where, uh, in the past, perhaps the supervisors would have approved awards for the grant program and then we would cut, the county would cut checks to those organizations essentially providing those resources and as part of that guidance that the uh county auditor has interpreted for us from the state is that we need to be able to more clearly document what those expenditures uh were uh that, that service that we're purchasing, what are we actually purchasing with those county funds and um uh, that there's an agreement between the county and that organization in how that's going to, to happen and we do that on a reimbursement basis. So that's been the eye that I think Stella has done a couple of them and I've done the rest of these purchases of services is that there's something that says, this is what we're agreeing that you're gonna do for us and then uh you turn in that documentation with an invoice and then we can turn around and provide reimbursement to you. So we're, we're just sort of embarking on that. And I think purchase of service is an appropriate way to look at that, uh, in, in terms of calling it that. So one of the things that uh in this dialogue, both with the supervisors, our colleagues and uh staff here at the county as well as with some organizations, um, something I'm offering uh for you to think about as you go about your budget practice is potentially there are some organizations that have been uh suggested to go and, and, and apply in, in terms of how they might get a partnership or a relationship with the county to do a particular activity toward what we had called the grant program and um you're certainly not required to do this, but one way to, to think about that for some of those organizations that perhaps we either fund year to year or that perhaps um have that sort of special built-in public purpose that you may consider just directly budgeting some of those organizations in your budget rather than having them in your sort of competitive, we release an application and then you evaluate that application in, with others and, and make some decisions.
Would you, you would be referring to like ECIA where it's a membership?
Yeah, so some of those organizations, um, uh, their application that comes to you every year has been for some level of membership, uh, ECI is a good example. Um, they have a, a couple of different levels of membership. One is for ECI, the organization, they also provides staffing and stuff to DMATS, the transportation group. And they invoice the county for a share of the local match that they use in order to get, draw down federal dollars, so there's usually some formula that it, that they've come to about how that happens. Um and there are probably in several different organizations that that fit within that category. I think they're on the next page Stella, but um one way to approach that, I guess, I, I uh, this is really just trying to get your feedback here is do you wanna just directly budget some of those? I would offer, based on the, the guidance that the, the, our county auditors provided, that they would still be sort of a purchase of service to do some things and, and we may still continue to want to have an agreement about what are you going to do for the resources that we're providing to you. But it might be different and that's why I called it sort of a budgetary, sort of a purchase of service uh versus perhaps a competitive round where we're releasing an application to the community or the, the county and seeking ideas about projects that they're trying to accomplish. Ultimately, all of those may have a, some sort of or agreement or contract about what they're gonna do and how, under what circumstances we would reimburse them. You do not have to do it that way. I'm just offering, cause that was what uh as staff, uh, we've talked through and, and that's an idea we we think may have value for some of those organizations, it may have value for your, for you, um, and uh may make it easier when you go, if you decide to do some sort of competitive round of applications.
Well, I would think the clear-cut membership ones like ECIA should go into our budget. Cause we're just paying for a membership to ECIA. Other ones that are, yeah, they may be yearly but we're still giving them money and they're using it, we have to be able to show that that's for public purpose, you know, it's not a membership. It's, we're giving them tax dollars, so I think it has to stay in that purchase of service contract.
And so I, I, I appreciate you clarifying this and I think we're getting close, so kinda what I see from your memo and question to my colleagues is this area of purchase of service, is this non-county department stuff? Is this nonprofit and/or is this government, the government stuff? Is that kind of in the end?
It's the nonprofit, is my understanding correct?
Yeah, uh, I, I understand the nuance that Supervisor Wickham is noting here that, you know, some of them are also, um let's continue to use ECIA, it's sort of quasi-governmental organization. Um, perhaps that's where you're, you're thinking there, Jay.
Well, they're not necessarily on this list, but uh, you know, in the past, in the past, many of them are very, very close to government. More exact of the organization, it could be five oh three C sixes as community action nonprofits, but we have also used this funding pool for government transactions, Cascade Pool.
Fworth's flashpad this year.
Flashpad. So I'm just asking, is that an area, is that how we're gonna categorize this? And that's kinda what I came up to, now, not against parsing off the government, the government stuff, I'm fine with that too, and having it be nonprofit, but are these funding mechanisms that don't fall within normal county department stuff? Is that, is that a fair assessment? That's what I see it.
It, it seems like as we've gone through the, the applications of projects that you decided to, to, to fund recently last month, um there are, there's probably a little bit of a mix, there are probably some of those projects that have their project is, is doing something for a county department, um.
On this list? I, I'm having trouble finding that.
You're, 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 you're correct, they're not on this list.
My colleagues, is that how you wanna categorize this?
Right.
Does that make sense? That's the only, that's the only logical thing I came to is that these are non-departmental things, they don't come in department budgets, they still are an ask, it's a tradition that we've been you know, it's historically, they've been funded and that's the categorization I've kinda fallen to and it's good to have a lot of words, but in the end, that's what I'm, you know, if somebody says, hey, how do I fund this, you're like, oh, it's not a department. You're a nonprofit and you feel or think this is a purchase of service that would be aligned to what the county's role would be. Then it would show up here for deliberation. But I'm open to other ways, but that, that's kinda what I've come to reading your, reading your email and, or your memo and then hearing what we've done in the past.
Uh Supervisor Wickham, I think that um is actually a very interesting comment because these have all fallen in our non-departmental area of our budget. Um, so they are traditionally two nonprofits and have not aligned with the department. As we, as we look through most of these and as Ed is walking through, there are some that do definitely align differently than just non-departmental nonprofit.
One of the grants, the Tom Hancock Grant, I had, I mean, I think I've asked this before, that it be part of a department that, so that it is, it, it's, it's, we know, I mean, I believe we're gonna continue that, it's likely, yeah, so that should be either in the EMA budget, um, it should be there.
It is, so that's one that we, we started moving some things out to budgets, to departmental budgets last year, um, trying to see if that worked for us. Um, the Tom Hancock Grant was moved out, we put a couple of things into the Health Department budget, um, the Mercy MAT program was moved out to there also. I think that's about it right now. So starting to align um some of these organizations with departmental budgets to see if they're providing services for a specific department.
Yeah, I, I concur and we've kind of discovered that as we continue to work more closely with these organizations because we have to develop an agreement with them and like, what are you doing and how is this impacting us? And so uh, some of that's been challenge, uh, interesting to find out that, oh, you're actually providing this for a service at the jail or something like that.
Yeah, I think a one light that, that, that makes sense because you've got, you know, department heads that are responsible for it, you got additional people with oversight into, to manage the implementation of that. On the other hand, sometimes it can get lost in government budgets, so uh you took, take all of these and you throw them in our seventy-nine million dollar budget. You may never see them again, where here it does have a lot more scrutiny, a lot more discussion on what is the value of using the taxpayers' dollars for these amounts. And so I'm, I'm kinda torn between though, but, but I, but I think some of them should have a natural home and so for example, VNA, they are a nonprofit like many of these other nonprofits and they provide a service and they're, they're smack right in the middle of the Health Department and have been for my whole tenure and so they've always managed that relationship and they come and ask for funding in front of the supervisors and we provide the funding to the Health Department and then they subcontract VNA and that seems to work good. But I, I think, you know, I, I think it's good that we have this discussion, I think in the end of the day, you just kinda have to pick how you wanna categorize these so you can tell the public and we can internally kinda maybe have comfort with it.
I think we'd have, I think, well I think we'd have to go through each one and make a determination whether it's a membership or it's a purchase of service. The membership shouldn't be coming out of the grants, if, like ECIA, it's, I think it was twenty-three thousand or something for Dubuque County's membership. It shouldn't be a purchase of service. It should be coming out of state supervisory budget or whatever. But you'd have to make that determination, but I think we need to get back to where we were uh for four years is between four and five hundred thousand and last three years excluding last year, obviously, it's gone up double, triple this book. More than that, I think we need to get down to that five hundred thousand dollar top.
I'd like to be at six hundred thousand dollars and I would use it, that my idea would be to use it for that amount of money to be for competitive purposes and I would include on that to be um, any nonprofit that isn't specifically aligned, it would have a, a human services component. I mean, if I if this were my decision alone, it's not. I would have us have some kind of a goal setting where we talk about, you know, what is it that we're trying to fund? Is there a strategy to funding nonprofits as compared to a broad sprinkling? You know, that's been kind of an argument I've had over the years that it's a matter of who knows we do this and and who applies as compared to going up for RFP saying, you know, we are interested in doing a purchase of services for childcare development. Who does that? And then those folks enter competitive bids on that. And that would be what we would use the six hundred thousand dollars for. So it would be more intentional than just, this is the time of the year that people apply to us for services they provide. It gives us, you know, we have plenty of time to do that in the next fiscal year with this discussion now. I personally would look at memberships and Greater Dubuque Development, which and Dubuque Works, which is, I suppose, a membership of type. They are our economic development arm. They do that. That is the work I think they're charged to do with us. Also, Travel Dubuque, again, it's not necessarily, they don't send us a dues bill in the mail, but it is kind of intentional that that's our share of the work that they do, which is for economic development. So I I see that as being a very high level. They those distinguish themselves from those that are listed as, you know, Riverview, Operation New View, Opening Doors, Y, all obviously essential things, but I would prefer to use a competitive bid process for those types of things that seem a little more purchase of services that historically might also be considered philanthropic. And that's not the role of government.
I would I would agree. I forgot about Travel Dubuque. I was thinking as that is more of a membership type thing also. They're working for us per se to bring people into the county. To your six hundred thousand, I stayed at five hundred thousand because of the grants that the food policy give out. We're kind of giving them money and they're giving grants out. So that kind of that's, I guess I'm at the six hundred thousand, but I don't know how much money the Food Policy Council was given out on top of that.
Well, I'd like to have, I mean, I I think that the Food Policy Council, Food Policy Council discussion for that budget, I would put that inside the Department of Health, Board of Health Department. I I don't want them making grants anymore. I I do not, that that was not financially and audit wise, I don't know that that was successful for us last year. And we, I think we need to take a much more direct role with accountability. I don't think the food policy should be entering into contracts with individuals all well intentioned, but I would like to see that. So I wouldn't. I I'd like to see that maybe be moved intentionally as a line item, but we have a brand new Board of Health that's going to have to learn about what their expectations are. Those are not just pass through grants. They need to be, again, competitive. What are you trying to do strategically? All of this money should be for some kind of intentional purpose.
Right. That's where my confusion was, is why the Food Policy Council was giving out grants, we're giving money to the Board of Health and then they're giving it. It should be I think a lot cleaner if the Board of Supervisors is providing that instead of going through another. So I wouldn't have a problem with the six hundred thousand. That that's where my confusion was with the Food Policy Council, how much they were giving out as grants and if if we're doing up contracts, Ed, on those or?
We did.
I I I believe that Stella handled those.
Yeah.
While it's very common in government, so that word is very common in government, we've moved away from that, right? These are all now purchase of services.
Right, right.
So, sorry. So they're all purchase of services. And so I think if you're just going to use the literal sense, they're the same as the Health Department contracting with V N N, V N A, excuse me. So they're all contracts. I think you're just right back to one assigning a dollar potentially, if you want to have the supervisors review them in this category versus other budget, you know, deliberations in different departments. But they're, at least from what we tend to, assuming the supervisors all agree, the grant is no longer what we do. I see the auditor shaking his head and they're nodding. So it's, I mean, it's no different than Board of Health, Contract with V N A, or it's no different than I T contracting with a private company. They all have documents and contracts associated. You're just determining what level of approval is. Is it that supervisor level only? Or is it department and supervisor? That's the way I'm parsing it. I don't. And then the memberships, you know, I wouldn't take that too far. I'm certainly happy if ECIA and or the Chamber. But I think talking about, you know, specific initiatives that Greater Dubuque has and Dubuque Works has, that's, in my opinion, not a membership, but it's still worthwhile. So because you have a contract and you're purchasing their services to do things. And it's clearly in Iowa code that economic development is part of our charter. So we just happen to outsource that. That's how I tell people, we outsource our economic development. We don't hire anybody from economic development at the county. We basically pay Greater Dubuque to do that.
Would either of my colleagues be interested in having a five hundred or six hundred thousand dollar number? Harley, I would work with you on that certainly, but that it would be toward a specified goal that we would need to set or stretch something that we would employ. So we would have to have more discussion about it before those applications went out. What do we want to do that's that might be helpful to the county from our particular understanding of the needs? That could be done.
Of what category? So of nonprofits and non-departmental nonprofits? Is that kind of what you're? That's how you'd categorize the five hundred thousand?
Things that we would set as specific goals. So if you want to say a specific goal that's ongoing is economic development. I think that that could be where it wouldn't be competitive. Perhaps that's, maybe it is competitive. Who does economic development? I mean, we are a major partner and a major funder of Greater Dubuque.
Dyersville does, so does Cascade. So, you know, we don't send checks to them. So does ECIA. We do send a small check to them. So, yeah, there are other groups that provide economic development. I'm sure if you talk to the Chamber and Main Street and, you know, a few others, they'd say, yeah, we do that. I I think it's really just for me, you know, we can talk about the number, but I'm really trying to figure out what what is the category of groups you're trying to fund? And is it, is it as simple as they're just ones that aren't in the department? And they lean towards nonprofit or are nonprofit? And then the third leg is government. That's what we've done in the past. But we could parse all three of those out or we could keep all three together. That's what we've done in the past is been non-departmental, nonprofit and government things. And then they come to the supervisors and we, along with help, make that decision. It doesn't run through a department. If that's what we're talking about, then I'm then then I'm okay moving to the next level of the number for that.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, what are you referring to?
Right. I I think we need to set out some categories, whether they're goals or they're categories. Economic development is certainly essential. It's identified in the code. That category should be listed, and I think we we can set a number to that. But when we get to nonprofits, that's where I think we have this tendency to throw the door wide open. And I don't, I don't want to spend a half a million dollars on nonprofits just generally without some kind of goal. So I would say we could budget that number, but it would need to be further defined based on goals set by the Board of Supervisors. That could then change every year based on what we see to be the needed response. And also, I think this year lets us kind of respond well to what ARPA funding picks up and what doesn't, you know, changing circumstances of the community overall. So I would set economic development as its own entity or category, however you want to use that. Memberships into the chambers and memberships to ECIA and the Dyersville. Also, the Dyersville Chamber, I'd still like to find a way to join the Cascade Chamber. You know, those are things that I think are more membership driven. And then the other item would be goals assigned by the Board of Supervisors during a process, and then it goes out for a competitive bid. That would be my general framework for discussion today. And I think we can assign high level numbers to that. And but they don't release applications today.
No.
So we need to come together on this, that they can get the applications out. That we do have this moving forward by July first, when they're supposed to take effect, not like last year, they're just getting some of their money from last July. So we would like to keep this on a track. I guess you're setting your goals.
Can I give you a suggestion, Harley? So a goal might be childcare. There's a role for us to play in childcare. Perhaps a role, although, you know, if you listen to Sarah, Senator Carrie Kelker, she said government can't throw money at this, right? Well, we can try to assist strategically. If we say that we're interested in working with childcare development, then we're actually setting that as a goal and we're asking Staples Square, we're asking the Dubuque Community Y, we're asking D C E C, we're asking people to come forward with innovative ideas or shortcomings that maybe we can be of assistance with. Otherwise, it's just a matter of, you know, who knows there's an application time period.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, I have no problem, you know, identifying goals and going through that that process. Same point, though, you it's down to votes. So that's how our government's set up. So the supervisors ultimately will vote on how they spend the taxpayers' money. So you have to consider that, but it gives a general direction to the to the group, to the community on what we're looking to prioritize.
Then you're only be so much money allotted, obviously. I've dealt with grants for years with the Sheriff's Office. The state puts this much money in a a grant. Well, if they put a million in it and you get two million dollars in grant requests, guess what? Everybody gets fifty percent. That's just the way it is. I mean, some of them might get thrown out, don't get me wrong. But just for easy math, it just gets split up evenly between those that apply if there's you know, only nine hundred thousand dollars get applied for it. Well, then there's a hundred thousand left that they use for something else. But if there's more apply, well, you just you get cut back some, that's all. This is all the money we're going to allot for these programs and you apply for it and hopefully, you know, you get what you ask for, but you may be cut back ten percent because there's more ass and money. You got to be fair to everybody, I think.
In competitive bids, you're being fair in saying everyone should submit their best proposal and you might only pick one or two.
Well, that's true, too. Yeah.
It's all to the board.
Correct.
You know, so I think you can set up the parameters, but at the end of the day, you know, there might be new initiatives that a supervisor or others discover and the supervisor brings that to the board and the board supports it. It's in the budget.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
That's how it works. So I wouldn't go too far. I mean, I think it's a good discussion. I think we need to, I think it's helpful to set a budget if we want to at a high level. But, you know, I'd remind my colleagues, we're sitting on seventy already applications for American Rescue Funds. We haven't had a single day of discussion or funding for. So before we create a whole nother process of other, you know, applications and that, we we might want to clear out the ones we've asked already. Just as, you know, workload.
And I I would say, Jay, as you suggest, I do think we need to continue to clear out what is pending before us. And I'm not, I am not in any way upset with some delay, Harley. I'm not. Let's get some of that cleared and we can say that we're what we're doing here is setting a budget. That's the purpose here is to set budget and then to ask our team to work on some particulars and they can bring it back to us with other high level discussion points. But we don't have to open an application today. Checks are not going to go out until July first or thereafter, based on purchase of services. Checks may not go out till the end of the calendar year when it when an invoice is provided to us. So there is some, there's much more delay, I think, inherent in this new purchase of services than there was in the past. And people, when they apply, they just need to know that, but it's a it's a new, it's a new way forward. And if it doesn't fit their budget, then they maybe we're not their funder.
Very true.
So in in the end, we're just looking for kind of the category of these purchase of services, right? And then a dollar amount. And so, you know, I think going through, you know, goal setting and trying to determine categories that that may, that will delay the process. And I would do American Rescue Funds before we worked on the new process because we've already asked the community to to go. So that'd be my two cents on on the priorities of those. And and so I'm kind of coming back to is the is the categories that Supervisor McDona said, one, board priorities. Okay. And then, two, they're not aligned to a department. Three, they lean nonprofit and or for their government as well. This is, I keep saying the same things. Am I on, is that what you guys agree on or is it, am I still missing it?
I wouldn't mind having you set it, set a number and then have our team kind of look at them to see how they sort out economic development and memberships maybe being one or economic development memberships. I mean, they've kind of done that for us, but I'm not interested in just opening the door to nonprofits if we don't have some kind of goals set for that. So I wouldn't, I would not be holding, you know, half a million dollars for nonprofits if we are not intending to have a discussion about goals.
Everyone on this list is a nonprofit. Just different determinations. So they're all nonprofits.
Nonprofit social services.
Okay, so now, yeah, so we've kind of done that in the past, too. We already have some economic development, social services, community. We've done some of that categorization as well, so that's good. But these are all nonprofits.
Right.
But Greater Dubuque is five oh one C three six. They also have a five oh one C three. And you can give money to both of them. They'll take them both and they do good work with it. And so are the rest of these. So I I think, you know, I think the intent is 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 good to try to box this in. But the reality is you've got independent and elected officials that have the ability to propose. And you have the pulpit right there that citizens can propose verbally and give you a give you a piece of paper that says, here's what I'd like to do with my tax dollars. And we're the body that gets to make those decisions.
So my proposal would be to put in a number of six hundred thousand dollars for everything that's included in this memo. That would be my budget number. It would include memberships, fees would include the economic development arm, cap it at six hundred thousand dollars. And then we can go through the various categories as we need to.
And so in this budget, it mentions in December, we did roughly six hundred thousand and nineteen projects. And then the additional ones listed, I don't know if they're overlap or another two hundred, I don't know if there's add three hundred. So I mean, if the category is, you know, what the grant with the chart shows, at one point, the peak was one point six. Yes, if, you know, assuming we're comparing apples to apples, but just in the last twelve months, we would be doing a million plus. Is that fair? You got six hundred thousand, five hundred ninety in the one category you were right about, and then the other headings. Or I see.
Some of those, some of those requests were paid for out of the mental health funding. So.
Trying to get to is what's the dollar amount? So what, you know, what have we done just recently?
I think it's, I I would consider this year, the fiscal year twenty two, an anomaly because of the pandemic and because of the different funding streams and because of the Fund Ten Balance projects. So I wouldn't base it upon our last year. We put a budget number in.
I'm asking the question what the number is. So I appreciate your.
Very good.
What I'm asking staff.
The the number is a little complex.
The the number is a little complex. So it's, as you, as you pointed out, through this particular program, purchase of service, you've allocated just about 700, 692. There were some projects that applied for a grant, purchase of service, that you ultimately approved them for through the mental health fund tend funding. And sometimes the application that they had submitted for consideration changed significantly, was larger or something like that. So it 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 was hard to just say, well, this is what was the applied for and this is what you spent out. They changed a little bit along the way, but I think acknowledging that that you, the county used the funds available to it as it stepped through that process with them. And some of those applications or projects changed along the way and B S, you, in essence, you 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 approved about 1.1 million dollars in mental health fund projects in the fall and $700,000 of this, so of purchase of service stuff. But not all of that one point, whatever that adds up to 1.8 million, that that was not all things that applied through purchase of service or other things. Those were applications that that came in through the fall through a variety of mechanisms, so. It's tough to, it's tough to more clearly answer your question, Supervisor Wickham.
I appreciate the historical graph. I mean, I was here for many of those since I remember those. It was kind of before we categorized them as a purchase of service. It was more aligned to a grant, yeah, very much more aligned to a grant that the county felt was worthwhile and had been, many of these people received funding for decades. So I'm a little hesitant to set a number without knowing exactly what we do. I think if you do set 600,000, you better be prepared to say no to a few people that have been receiving funding for for many years over.
And that's understandable. There's going to be a lot of people getting told no on the A R P funds too, so.
I have voted no on some requests over the years. Last year, the year we're in right now, fiscal year 22 is, again, I suggested it's an anomaly. But I have voted no, and those will be recorded on some of the the grant requests.
I would be in favor of capping it at 600,000 and then figuring out how to break it out from there to, you know, your sections that you had brought up, Jay.
Sounds like we have consensus.
We'll try to bring that back. This wasn't an action item, obviously, or anything like that. We'll just kind of synthesize through that. We really appreciate the conversation with three of you. We'll try to bring some stuff back and you'll have decision points later in this budgeting process, so.
That's what I said, to be fair to everybody, we have to kind of keep it moving along that the application process can start in a timely fashion also. And I understand we have a lot to do with the A R P. We really don't need any more dumped on us right now, but at least we have the process moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
I do want to ask a question quickly. Do, does anybody want to make the motion that that number goes into the budget at 600,000? Or do you want to continue discussion in one of these work sessions prior to the setting of the budget?
I think we have consensus, but I prefer to not do a motion. I I can still be unpersuadable when I see it come back. That's where I am.
And so, and so the the intent would be that this would be funding available July 1st for $600,000. And then sometimes for service, for service. And sometimes between now and then, we would, once again, get the notification that the funding's available and maybe better categorize it. And then they would come back to us as well.
And again.
Most likely post-budget.
Right. Just to reiterate, to give you back what I thought I heard is that just what you described, but also there may be some of these that you're going to consider just as a part of your budget potentially as purchase of service, but but you're actually line iteming them as a, for instance, economic development or a.
So much for that, so much for. Trying to blank here, I guess.
But not identifying for greater to do in that example though. So we'd say, hey, so when we come into budgeting per, we would be like, hey, let's budget 200,000 for economic development. And then later on, that becomes a purchase of service and then we align it to that. Is that Stella, is any of this making sense? I'm not.
It 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 is.
They would apply for that section of funding for the economic development.
Just like they have in the past.
Right, but there's only going to be so much in the economic development, so much for nonprofit, so much for whatever. So when that pool is, when that bucket's empty, well, that's the way it is.
Stella, you getting all this?
Yeah, I'm there.
Does that make sense?
Another layer, I, boy, I just really cautious, I was adding a whole bunch of other layers when we're sitting on 20 million dollars of federal funds and we've got all these other stuff. But if, I mean, it certainly adds more clarity and more definition, but that hasn't helped us.
I'm going to.
Nine months.
Transparency can't hurt us, but you said we were sitting on 20 million. I I'll give you that. But we're also sitting on $66 million in requests for that.
I'm going to, just to make sure that I'm clarifying a little bit of 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 what I was trying to lay out there. Again, just as this food for thought, that some of these organizations in their basic, in their, in their general year to year requests, which are usually very similar, that some of those, as opposed to necessarily asking them to participate in sort of a application round, they may be requested to provide some level of information to you that you would potentially just have them in your budget as a, as a thing that would would not be going out for what I'm going to call a competitive application. That that it would just be, the three of you would decide, let's pick on Greater Dubuque Development just for a moment, that 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 you've been funding it at this level and that organization works with you and you decide to do that again, as opposed to that being in this competitive round, you would just have that in 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 your budget. They would still have a contract, a purchase of service contract, to say what they're going to do and what you're going to reimburse them for, but it would be, it it would, it would not necessarily be part of that that window of of stuff that 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 goes out. That is just, and there could be other organizations like that. Another way that I think I framed it up in the memo to go along with Supervisor Wickham was was looking for categories. One is, some of these are multi-organizational entities that you and other colleague counties are a part of. And you know, there's a certain amount that that as a membership or dues or something that they're expecting that you're going to participate at a certain level. That's probably another group. The limestone bluffs are C and D. The Macocota River Water Management Authority is another. That sort of thing. The other one I think I included in there was the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, which is, I think, 17 counties. So that's my other food for thought for you. I appreciate hearing from you about how your approach is, but I I was just saying, there may be some of these that you'd like to just include in your budget. Maybe that's inside that overall threshold that you're looking to allocate. Maybe it's different, but then you would just decide at some point that that's how much you're going to allocate for that organization or that entity or that activity. And then the competitive application would be for some other purpose. And I appreciate the the discussion about goals too and how that fits together, so.
In short, we're going to do that in March, April, May, in some part of June, right? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
We're just going to do it later like we did before.
Yes.
Okay. And then next year, we get ahead of it and start doing it in December, is that?
That that is very possible. I I I did not speculate about the next year, but yes.
Window gets close if you need to, you know, have authorization to this funding July 1. I'm just trying to understand what you guys are trying to accomplish, so.
I guess it's different following on yours. I was looking at the memberships not going into this purchase of service thing at all. Where whether we make a line item in the supervisor's budget under membership fees and ECIAs under it and the other these entities where their ECI currently now has a purchase of service agreement and really it's a membership fee. Yep, no. U C C, we don't make them go through a purchase of service for our membership fee there. It's the same thing, you know what I mean?
You see under our, is in, yeah, U C C under our supervisor budget?
It's a contract, but it's not a purchase of service contract. They're technically working for us, I guess.
Stella, is that in the non-departmental?
Yeah, so U C C resides in non-departmental, so it's not specific to the supervisor's budget. And the thought behind that was that they work for the whole county, so it wasn't just designated to the supervisors.
Okay, so there's candidate Dubuque and other ones. I think I'm comfortable where we're at, but I think we've got a general number. You know, I know there's more good work, we'll figure it out.
Right. One quick, this is the auditor. Stella structured these agendas in a wonderful way that allow you to take any possible action at any given point. So I know that throughout this process, if if the board comes to a consensus, I think it would benefit everybody around if that consensus is true to take possible action. And you have that availability to do that at any point. I just wanted to remind the board.
I think I'm expecting something to come back from Ed Raver at our, at another meeting. Could even come back at a regular meeting, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you. We appreciate the discussion with you all here, thank you.
Another thing I would point out, Stella, if a lot of these come in under non-departmental, maybe non-departmental should be presented at the same time as we do this kind of discussion. So we can see what else is in non-departmental that didn't, you know, kind of make the memo.
So the majority of non-departmental is the taxes. There's, there's not much that resides out there in non-departmental. So these always have, but it's why we highlight them out separately and do multiple work sessions and things to discuss the purchase of service or grants, as we have historically called it.
Maybe U C C should be here. It's kind of like Greater Dubuque or Travel Dubuque.
I would agree.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody need a break or?
Finish it off.
I'll go to the supervisor's departmental budget discussion.
So intentionally put the supervisor's discussion directly after that, knowing that you may or may not choose to move any of this stuff into your budget. So let me just screen share just our departmental report. This is the supervisor's departmental budget. Can you see that? So it's very basic and I just have the budget in for next year at the same as this year. And very basic salaries and wages and general office supplies, mileage and travel, education and training, and then dues and memberships, which we've just been discussing extensively. So it's pretty standard, just any thoughts, questions? I didn't know, potentially wanting to roll any of the items that we were just discussing discussing into your budget, into dues and memberships specifically. I can tell you what's currently in dues and memberships would be our Chamber of Commerce memberships, our ISAC membership and our NACO membership.
All of our chamber memberships?
Yes, so we have for last year or for this current fiscal year, the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce and the Dyersville Chamber of Commerce. And I believe we've budgeted for.
Cascade, and we just didn't get them to come back. What's in the $5,000 for, we've spent to date on education and training, $5,000. What what's, what is that?
Let me grab that detail quick. I gotta move things around on my screen a little bit. And education and training. So, so far, it's wrong here, pardon me. So it is the ATV U T V ordinance campaign. So there was money for that still. It looks like 4,600 of that so far. And then the Legislative Luncheon that we host is also an educational session on Dubuque County and what we're doing.
And where is Dubuque Night?
Dubuque Night in Des Moines actually resides out with these non-departmental purchase of service.
Okay. Would seem like that should sit with ICE, with the Legislative Luncheon, doesn't it?
It very well could. And that's part of this discussion that Ed, I think, was working to get through is some of these things may really reside better within your supervisor budget as something that is truly a dues or a membership more so. And I don't think there's many of them. And I agree with Supervisor Wickham, you don't want to start sticking all of these into the budget all over because they will get lost. But I think there are a couple that are truly a better, probably placed within your budget. So I mean, ECI, we've talked about that one a lot, but I think that one does kind of fall into a dues and membership or some kind of professional services. We have a line item for professional services. I mean, those are the things that we could look at shifting out of that traditional rant for purchase of service.
Why would ECI be different than Greater Dubuque?
It's, I mean, the formula is different, how they how they bill us. So that's one thing, so it's built on population, that's unincorporated in others. Greater Dubuque's formula and how they bill us is not based upon that. It's based upon their goals and their campaigns.
Okay, good point.
It's different, but I mean, in the end, they're all 501(c)(3)(6)es that do community stuff. And chambers, God bless them, or, you know, you could make a case that a neighborhood association is also a 501(c)(3)(6) and we should be funding them as well. So you are making differentiations of who has the most value and most structure and the most legacy that you're going to fund. But there's a lot of them out there. I mean, I think there's probably an economic development group in every little town, just at whatever level they can run it. But my my two cents would be however, those that were closest to the budget, were closest to auditing, give them the flexibility of how they want to put these in the budget. Because you ultimately have to roll this up and make it work to the state, right? And ask to pass the auditors test of how you're categorizing it and those types of things, which I have no interest in getting involved with unless you need my help.
I would be looking at a status quo budget for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
I can't think of anything that we need to include. I mean, I, there's some training interests that I have, but you know, that that I would bring that if it was high dollar item to my peers anyway.
Certainly.
Harley, your thoughts? Might be able to wrap it up.
I'm not sure which way to go with it.
That sounds like status quo then. You don't go forward, you don't go backwards.
Here, I'm still getting, still getting buried or something, but I would agree with you, let the auditor determine, or those close to the budget determine where things could go. Because obviously, I'm not up on it and bring it back to us and see how we can make it work.
Harley, do you think there's any additional expenses that we need to put in our budget for mileage? For, I mean, the categories that are listed there, you know, hiring professional service. Hiring professional services. I mean, I think the ATV training's done. I think that that contract with NICC is ended. So, uh, you know, there's certainly a little bit of flexibility in there, but I don't personally see anything. I'm not aware of anything we would need to budget in, but I would be open to obviously the, what Jay said, the auditor and folks who are closest to it to tell us what fits here.
Yeah, I don't have anything that would, uh, that I could come up with, uh, add to it.
Okay. I think that's great. We'll leave, um, the supervisor's budget, uh, the same for next year. Um, aside for as, um, we make or the board makes determinations on any kind of uh, wage changes or the comp board recommendation, those things will be plugged into the budget as we go, but otherwise all the other categories will remain the same for next year.
That sounds good. Good enough. Anything further?
I think that's it. I think we got done a little bit early today.
This is the, uh, auditor. One more quick little note. Um, beginning on Monday's meeting, at the end of Monday's meeting, we will adjourn. And then beginning on Thursday's budget meeting, we will start an entire fresh meeting. Uh, since we're publishing individual meetings, we're going to treat them as individual and then they'll have a diff, an individual set of minutes for each meeting as well, just to make everybody aware.
But we'll be adjourning today.
Yeah, you'll be recessing today. I'm sorry, you'll be adjourning today. After every meeting, you will be adjourning. Yes.
Good, good.
Well, it's clear as mud some days.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second that.
Have a motion in the second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Sam.